I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council of Yuba City, February 7th, at 6:00 PM. There was nothing to report coming out of the closed session. Roll call.
Mayor Cleveland?
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBau?
Here.
Councilman Buckland?
Here.
Councilman Cardoza?
Here.
Councilman Harris?
Here. Could we all rise and we'll do the invocation and then the pledge allegiance. Which student would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Is there a volunteer? Adventurous one? Oh, come on. Okay, got one, awesome. Thank you very much, after the invocation. Our great and mighty God, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Thank you, Lord, that we have this awesome privilege to serve the community in deciphering the needs and to figure out, Lord God, how to deal with the challenges that come our way. We pray that we would execute our service diligently and search for the best outcomes. Now, we thank you for this in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I have a presentation on National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. There she is. It's there? Okay, this is another one of the items that CASA Desperanza works with. We thank you very much for taking on some of these most difficult issues and keeping it in the forefront in our community. Here's a proclamation, and this is on teen dating violence awareness. One in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violent affecting youth. High school students who experience physical violence in dating relationships are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide and much more likely to carry on patterns of abuse into future relationships, engage in risky sexual behavior, unhealthy dieting behaviors, and experience disruption of normal development in self-esteem and body image. Only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit that they do not know if it is one. The establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council proclaim that February 2017 is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and urge all agencies and businesses to work towards ending teen dating violence, done this 7th day of February 2017. I know you probably have something to say.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Actually, I just want to say thank you to the council for their continued support of CASA. We very much appreciate it. And this is CASA's 40th anniversary this year, and so I understand that we have the council to thank also because we will be seeing some of you. It's on Friday night. Forty years is a long time, and I've been part of it for 19 years this year, so I'm pretty excited.
So there's a big event on Friday night?
Friday night on the 10th. It's going to be, it's an event, and it's a fundraiser for CASA since I don't know if everybody knows, but we had a fire, and so we're a little bit displaced right now. But we continue to provide all services that we have always provided, so if anyone has any questions, call, there's always somebody there 24/7, never not there. So, does anyone have questions for me?
This is actually particularly in your...
This is about you guys. Okay.
You're shy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now, I have a little extra business to do before we move on to the rest of the agenda. Staff was informed that an agenda item has come to the city's attention after the posting of the closed session, that needs to be closed session, so we need to vote as to whether we're going to put it on to the end of the meeting. Would like the city attorney to state the governmental code section this fits under?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just as a, some general information, some procedural issues have arisen concerning a pending employee discipline matter that we need to discuss in closed session with the City Council pursuant to the Brown Act, Government Code Section 549, 54.2. We can place an item on the agenda to do that if we make two findings, if the council makes two findings, one, there's a need to take immediate action, and that action, the need to take that action came to the attention of the city and the city staff after the preparation of the agenda, which I believe happened in this instance. And so if the council can make those findings, then we would add an item to the agenda which would read, "Confer with legal counsel regarding a public employee, discipline dismissal release pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57."
So with that explanation, could I have a motion to add the closed session afterward?
I would so move the findings and recommendation of our attorney.
A second?
I second.
With that, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it's a unanimous vote. Okay, so afterward, we will retire to the, what's the room again?
Fremont.
I kept wanting to say Franklin. Fremont room behind us. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on. Public communication, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken at items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Were there any written requests?
You received one?
No.
What? Oh, no.
No, we didn't.
At least 24 hours before the meeting gets five minutes. Okay, but there was...
None received.
Okay. Okay, item number three, which is the actual appearance of interested citizens that give a written notice at the meeting, gets three minutes, and I see I have one with Pat Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland and council members. This concerns the ongoing negotiations with Yuba City employee groups. The Sutter County Taxpayers Association is asking the council for three things. First, we ask you to make sure there is a financial evaluation of the cost for whatever is being proposed. Second, once both sides, the employee organizations and the city, have made their positions clear, we ask that you present them to the public along with the financial analysis at least two council meetings before any agreement is brought before the council for approval, so that the citizens have the information and can give council their comments. We don't want to find out what has been agreed to after the agreements have been approved and signed. Third, we would like you to negotiate with the employee groups to implement COIN, Civic Openness in Negotiations, which would open up the process to we citizens who are paying the bill. I believe I sent the COIN information to council members who were in office last year, and I will send it to Mr. Harris and Mr. Cardoza tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council or staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there any requests or discussion? If not, looking for a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. General items, community policing coordinator position presented by Chief of Police, Rob Landon. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Try to get this to stay. In October of 2016, I was invited, 16, I was invited to attend the White House's Advancing 21st Century Policing Briefing Forum with over 100 other police chiefs from around the country. Then-President Obama's community-oriented police department's representatives spoke about the final report for the president's 21st century police findings from May 2015. It was a task force that was formed with over 100 stakeholders from diverse groups throughout the country to identify the best practices and offering recommendations on how policing practices can promote effective crime reduction while building public trust. Six pillars were identified during the course of their meetings. Number one was building trust and legitimacy. Number two was policy and oversight. Number three was technology and social media. The fourth was community policing and crime reduction. Fifth was training and education. And sixth was officer wellness and safety. I think the Yuba City Police Department has done a real good job of continuously improving on these six pillars, incorporating best practices as we go along. But the area of community policing is one that the department feels is the most impactful for our community. It creates an atmosphere of trust and inclusion. We feel the addition of a community policing coordinator would provide immediate, long-lasting, and great benefits to our community. It would help address building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, social media, community policing and crime reduction, and training and education. It would address five of the six pillars that we talked about on that. In the mid-1990s, the department employed a crime prevention officer. It was a non-sworn position that coordinated the Neighborhood Watch program, the various outreach programs the department had in place at that time. Through its tough economic times and restructuring of our department's duties, that position was reclassified, and ultimately, it was lost due to funding limitations. Since that time, we've assigned the duties to a multitude of different personnel in order to maintain the Neighborhood Watch program, the volunteers in policing, and the other outreach programs. We've seen a decrease in the number of Neighborhood Watch programs and a watering down of some of our other community programs as a result of the inconsistent oversight. This December, we lost our volunteer coordinator. She's still alive, but we lost her, she had to retire. We filled that role temporarily between sergeants and several volunteers. The volunteers only work a limited hours per month, and it creates a loss of efficiency in handling certain community issues that need daily maintenance. The supervision and oversight cannot be accomplished through a temporary supervisor who is also a volunteer and is not available to interact with the administration and the community on a regular basis. The sergeant's main responsibility is patrol. They don't have the time, the ability, and it impacts the supervision of the officers out in the street when we pull them off patrol to maintain this particular duty. The community policing coordinator would afford us the opportunity to provide a consistent presence and oversight for our volunteers to assist them as they perform their many critical functions. Our volunteers have identified the lack of consistency as a hurdle for them in the performance of their duties. These conditions are less than ideal, and they detract from the quality service that we try to provide our citizens and the innovation the police department strives to provide. The addition of this position would allow the department to greater access to the public, a more direct contact and improved communication with the Neighborhood Watch program, an ability to coordinate and facilitate regular meetings between the department and different community organizations to interact with our business community, and an opportunity to expand and increase our volunteers in policing. If you had an opportunity to look at the newspaper the other day, I think it was Sunday, we got a thank you from a citizen who had the opportunity to use our vacation patrol. The vacation patrol is kind of unique to the Yuba City area, and it's that if you decide you're going to go on vacation, we're not going to send an officer out there to check your house all the time to make sure nothing's happening, but we will put a volunteer who is non-paid to go out on a very regular basis to see and make sure that your newspapers are getting picked up, to make sure that you, there's no unusual cars, lights aren't being turned on, and they'll check that throughout the time where you're gone. And at the end of it, then we send them a thank you letter and thank them for using our services. So those kind of services, we're seeing watered down a little bit as we lose the oversight, the ability to recruit, and the ability to continuously monitor the programs for growth. The police department's a 24/7 day per week operation, obviously we know that, that requires redundancy in certain critical areas. One of the positions, one of the things that we're going to also do with this person is to have them assist with the personnel body cameras that we're bringing on in a couple weeks. They have a, create, requires a lot of work to be able to present the cameras and the videos that we take during the course of a day to the district attorney's office. We don't get advance notice of when they wanted to subpoena somebody, and we have one person who currently does that. We don't have the redundancy that I feel is going to be necessary for this program. We will make it work if we don't have the position, but it's not ideal. The other thing that it does is we have a very complex pace system at the police department. We don't have redundancy and the ability to monitor that program. Officers work unusual schedules. We do a lot of overtime. They're required to go to court at moments' notice. We're required to have a certain amount of officers on the road. And in order to do that and maintain, make sure that everybody's getting paid on a regular basis, we need to have somebody that's constantly doing our payroll. That position is currently filled by our administrative assistant, and she'll continue to do that. But in the event she needs to take vacation or something like that, we'll have redundancy built into that program also. The position of community policing coordinator would be reestablished in order to help balance the role of the department between enforcement, education, and interaction with our community. The job responsibilities would include oversight of the volunteers in policing, the GREAT Program, I don't know how many of you students are familiar with that, how many people here took the GREAT Program? It's kind of new in the last five or six years, but it's offered in the 5th and 6th grade. They'd be the new oversight for that program, the Citizens Academy, what we're starting Institute now, some of our other programs, the Coffee with a Cop, the biannual community forums, the Neighborhood Watch program, the National Night Out events, they'd become a social media liaison for us, the charge of our business partnership program we're trying to reestablish with the local businesses where we meet on a regular basis so we can share information and do training for them. There will be an immediate improvement of relations between the community and the department as we're able to work on a daily basis with all the different community groups throughout the city. It'd increase our responsiveness to community concerns and also allow for more positive interactions on a regular basis. There are several examples of this position amongst local law enforcement agencies currently in place. We've researched it, and we're going to take the best practices of those currently in place, which include Woodland, Rockland, Roseville, Davis, and West Sacramento. In evaluating the pay scale that's in front of you right now, I think basically, we're going to put it in with the same pay steps as a field service technician, which is our evidence clerk, and slightly above, records clerks, and slightly above CSOs, community service officers. There'd be an expectation of working overtime as needed to fulfill unscheduled or unplanned events, and we'd also be able to reevaluate and increase the services we currently are providing our community. The community policing coordinator will be tasked with continuously monitoring the needs of our citizens while evaluating other agencies for best practices and incorporating them into our police department so we can fulfill our mission of producing quality service and innovation to the city. The total fiscal impact is approximately, starting at step three, would be $82,672,000 annually, which includes benefits. The fiscal impact for this year would be approximately $20,668 if hired by March 1st, which, that's not enough time for human resources to work with that. The alternatives to this program is not approve the position, and the recommendation is to approve the position of community program coordinator making budget adjustments as necessary to the police administration budget, and with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Do council members have any questions for the chief?
No questions, but through the mayor?
Yes.
So, a couple of comments, and chief, thank you very much for bringing this, the recommendation forward to Beldue, re-engage with the public in a more comprehensive way that I know back in approximately 2008, I think, is when we started to lose this position. But the, a lot of people don't know, but Chief Landon is a TV star. He appeared in approximately 130 half-hour cable versions of something called Police Beat. We filmed a total of 138, so he only missed eight of those, and I'm not trying to embarrass him. But that was the beginning of a process, really, that allowed the citizens to be more engaged with not only the city of Yuba City, but the services provided by the police department, and he did a remarkable job of presenting the information on an ongoing basis, and that was weekly, to the citizens of Yuba City. But at the same time, there was also backfill to that, and there was field engagement, there was the opportunity for citizens to become more involved. From that, the, as you heard, the volunteers in policing was started up, a whole advent of things, shut-ins, elderly shut-ins get checked on. There are so many different programs that the police departments within a community engage in that it's not just go out and arrest people, harass teenagers on a high school campus, or write you tickets when you leave school, but it's about providing a level of interaction between the police department and developing that trust mechanism between the police and our community that is so vital to providing the highest level of public safety that we possibly can. So I'm encouraged and certainly support everything that this council can do, that I can do as one voting member, to be able to see this come forward. So, again, thank you, chief, and to the staff that helped put together all of the recommendations on this.
Thank you, Councilman Buckland.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, please. A couple of questions real quick, and then a comment. Chief, do you know already what the qualifications are for someone to be in this position, what they're going to have to come on off the street, bring to the table?
I don't have the exact ones, but I can tell you what we're looking for. We're looking for somebody that's already engaged in the police department, somebody that has experience working with the citizens, somebody that's articulate, has the ability to work with youth, with the different ages throughout the department. We'd like a little bit of schoolwork to go with that, possibly at least in associates. We haven't quite put everything together, but the big things that I want is the ability to work with people, to engage in that, and the experience of having prior.
All right, and then, is there a training program you have in mind?
We are...
Be on OJT?
It's going to be a lot of OJT. We actually have already been going, one of the programs that we've established is to send different employees out to different agencies throughout the state and to bring back different models that come back. One of them, we did actually send out to bring back different ideas about how they incorporate this program. So, again, we'll engage that, sending them back out to different agencies to see how they're doing things. We have prior experience through the department of people that have engaged in this. I'm not sure if I answered your whole question.
That's good. The, one thing, you talked about the pillars, I think, in my opinion, you're going to hit all of them. The safety aspect, when you have, I don't want to reiterate what Councilman Buckland has, but when you're out there in the community and you establish those relationships and have those conversations, you're going to breed some familiarity, which can garner support, and I tell you, that makes everybody safer, the officers, the CSOs, and the community. So you're going to tick every box on there, and I too, again, at the risk of repeating everything John just said, in fully support of your program, and I appreciate the suggestion and the work you put into it.
Thank you, council member, Mr. Harris.
Any other council member?
Just make a quick comment. I am completely in support of this position. I think it's a very well-rounded position to get the public participating in how they can help make the community strong in addition to our police department. And, you know, we've always talked about getting the public participation to be out there and do the right thing for our community, and that comes full circle. It's the police department, it's us, it's the community, it's everyone being involved and being aware. So, this would be a whole package of bringing that together, so thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, OJT. You're going to say, you do want to say something? Okay, go ahead.
I'm also, instead of repeating four times, I'm in complete support also, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Cardoza.
Absolutely. OJT means on-job training. Some of the words you may have book learning and some other experience, but there's going to be a lot of on-the-job training on this because there's no way to really prepare for it. It's real-life experience, so. And then, at what age can citizens become volunteers within the police department?
Volunteers, we have two different programs. So we have the students, who we can bring on at 15 years old to be cadets, and then we have the other program for adults who has to complete the Citizens Academy, which is a 12-week program every Thursday night, I believe, coming up usually Wednesdays. That's pretty much 18 and on up.
So I think there's a few of you out here that maybe qualify for that concept, and you could actually learn really what's going on in the community in different ways. It'll open your eyes up an awful lot, and you'll get a broader perspective of what's actually going on in your community. And I will also say that I had noticed since 2008, a significant drop in the public involvement in the Neighborhood Watch program. I had noticed basically a collapse on a lot of them. There are some people out there that are just dogmatic, and they're going to keep it going no matter what it takes in their neighborhoods, but this is something that I'm very pleased that it's going to be brought back if we vote in favor of this. It's, I know it's a foregone conclusion, but it's still not there yet. But thank you for bringing it back, and I know you'll enjoy having that extra help in the areas that you've been missing.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Okay, are there any questions? Actually, I'll open it to students. Any students would like to ask questions on any of these things? You know, you can learn how to get out and public speak a little bit. Okay, with that, looking for a motion?
Move to approve, staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And next, again, Rob Landon.
I'm having a hard time look over there with the glare off that hat.
It's okay, chief, it is a Patriot's...
That must be painful for you.
It is a Patriots hat, and I do have it pointed at the chief. The chief is a Seahawks fan, and their perfect pass two years ago resulted in a win. We won't talk about the pain that you went through Sunday night.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening again, Mayor, council members. The second item in front of you is the addition of two community service officers. The role of the community service officer is to perform routine, non-sworn, field and office law enforcement-related duties. Community service officers make citizens contacts, they promote positive public relations for the department, they write incident documentation, they collect and account for evidence, they process crime scenes, they assist sworn personnel in special events, and they perform other related work as assigned. Community service officers, and I'll refer to them as CSOs after this, allow sworn officers the ability to conduct more proactive patrolling by their ability to respond to a multitude of calls without suspects. They enable, and sworn officers, by the way, are officers that have gone to the academy, they carry weapons, they respond to all types of calls with suspects where the CSOs would not. They enable officers to spend less time at traffic accidents and in-depth crime scenes through the CSO's ability to provide traffic control and process crime scenes for evidence. This allows the officers more time to focus attention to ongoing progress, in-progress crimes. Some additional benefits that result from utilizing CSOs are officers can respond more rapidly to calls as they are not tied up on a cold call as much. The patrol officers are available to spend more time proactively looking for crime, as well as more time for directed enforcement, as the CSO spend more time on these calls helping the officers out, and they don't have to respond to them. In the 2009-2010 fiscal budget year, the Yuba City Police Department had eight positions for the community service officers. In 2016-17, that number had been reduced to four full-time CSOs. In 2016-17, that number had been reduced to four full-time CSOs, one crime analyst, who is also a lead CSO, who spends 50% of their time. As a CSO, 50% of the time working as a crime analyst. The crime analyst position was a full-time position in 2009-2010, which was lost due to retirement and consolidation also. The number of calls for service increased in that same time period from 2009, from 44,856 in 2009, to 2015, which shows 45,652 calls for service. As a result of the increase in calls for service, sworn staff shortages in that period of time, and less CSOs available to answer calls, the amount of available time for directed enforcement and proactive patrolling by the sworn officers was significantly impacted. Officers also had less time to engage in directed enforcement and in community events such as Neighborhood Watch program meetings, and other time to spend with the community. Hiring a patrol officer is a very time-intensive process. It can take a brand-new officer 13 months from the time that we do our initial testing until the time they become an officer. The delays caused by the time needed to conduct the testing, after the testing is conducted, you select the candidate. After candidate is selected, you do an intensive background investigation, which can take several months, depending on where they lived and how far we have to go to find them, all the information about them. They have to do a psychological examination, they have to do a medical examination, and then they're ready for the police academy. Once they start the police academy, that's another six-month program. If all that pans out, and they go through the whole process successfully, then we bring them on to Yuba City Police Department, they start their field training program. That's also a five-to-six-month program. So, by the time that's all weighed out, it's approximately 13 months before you realize an officer, from the testing to the date that he becomes an officer. A CSO, on the other hand, while they do have to still do the background examination, very comprehensive, they still have to do a psychological examination, they still have to do a field training program, we can have them on the road in four to five months. There has been a nationwide shortage of qualified officers, an exodus of retirements, and a decrease in available police academies. The end result is a very, very competitive market, and we're seeing that crunch all over the state and all over the United States. One alternative to increasing the proactive patrolling and directed enforcement for our patrol officers would be the addition of the CSOs. Although many of the background requirements are the same, again, the time would be reduced. The Appeal Democrat published a story on January 24th about patrol staffing issues in the Yuba Sutter area. The article highlighted staffing deficiencies and spoke about our department's efforts to increase our staffing. We're very confident, and statistics show that we are making progress in filling all of our sworn positions. In the current economic climate of low unemployment rates, competitive marketing for different officers, positions, and the inability of the police academies to conduct more academies per fiscal year, without intervention, we feel the issue will continue to be exasperated, and we're going to continue to revisit this time after time. I appreciate what the council has done with the expediting the testing process, and with the bonuses to bring lateral officers over, that has made a big difference. And I feel like that's going to take care of itself after a time, but we're not always be fighting that. Hiring CSOs is a viable alternative to fill the void that's created by this lack of officers also. It does not place a new sworn officer on the road, but it does allow for the current officers to spend more time being proactive and working on directed enforcement as the CSOs respond to the cold calls. CSOs will continue to respond to calls without suspects. Approximately 25% of all of our calls can be handled by a CSO. Although these are only 25% of our call volume, most of these calls are very time-intensive. If they process a crime scene, they could be there for several hours, hours that they could spend that the officer wouldn't have to. Crime, traffic accidents, many times the officer can do the initial stuff. If there's a hit-and-run, if there's a suspect involved, the officer can do the initial report and leave. The crime processing or the traffic processing, directing traffic, can be handled by the CSO. These calls can cause patrol officers to be unavailable for hours at a time. Current staffing for CSO is three on patrol, and one in investigations, and again, one 50% lead, CSO, and another 50% in the crime analysts. The addition of these two new CSOs, who will be assigned to patrol, will allow us to analyze the most appropriate time to schedule them. Obviously, it's going to most likely be at the peak call volume time. Currently, they work Monday through Friday on 10-hour overlapping schedules from 0600 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. When one CSO is on vacation, sick or in training, it causes additional workload on patrol staffing, and once again, the officers are spending more time responding to all kinds of calls. The total salaries and benefits actually projected, annually projected as step one, would be $72,843 per community service officer, times two, would be $145,686. The alternative to this is to not approve the position, and the recommendation of staff is to approve the additional position of community service officers, make budget adjustments as necessary to the police patrol budget. And with that, I'll open it up to questions from the council.
Any questions from council?
Through the mayor.
Councilman Buckland?
Chief, in regard to auto theft, how many of the CSOs that we currently have were the coveted 10851 PIN? That's the recovery of stolen vehicles.
Okay, so I don't know if two of them have it this year, but one of them had it last year, or the year before last, that's Lucy Lane, who gets it almost every year.
So, that, and the recovery rate for a 10851 PIN is?
Recovery rate?
Yeah, the recovery number? It's a lot, right?
We're right, yes.
So, yeah, I don't know exactly how many they have to recover, but to get the coveted PIN, yeah, there's a lot of qualifications, and probably about 1% to 2% of even police officers achieve that rate within a year. So, that is one of the great benefits that we have to the CSOs. Chief, regarding longevity with the department, what do our current CSOs, the length duration that they've been with us, would it be typically longer than what we've seen with new entry-level police officers?
Going to the current staffing, I know that one of them has been here over 22 years, one of them's been here between 15 and 20 years, the other one's been here, and in different agencies, almost 15 years, the other one is brand-new. I left one out. And the other one's been here for almost 20 years too, Eric Ball.
Right.
So, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
So, there are members of our community that have found a niche in police work that doesn't require them to be a higher level of service, but they do a tremendous amount of service to our community in relieving the workload off of police officers. And if you would, just for a little bit on the investigation side, I know that you talked about it briefly, but their involvement with crime scene processing and things like that, could you just expand upon that just a little bit for the public?
Absolutely. So, when you go to a crime scene, it's very time-intensive. For instance, a homicide with multiple victims, you have a lot of evidence that has to be processed. In order to have an officer do it, he's going to spend many, could be a couple of days doing it. So, the best, the CSOs get there, they rope off the crime scene, they've all been trained to a level, and most of them to a higher level than just evidence processing. All the stuff has to be packaged, preserved, documented, photographed, and then they send it off, actually, they're the ones that drive it off, to the Department of Justice, whether it be Chico or Sacramento. It's a very time-intensive process, and we're very fortunate to have the CSOs we have right now that have the ability to do that, but it is very, very time-intensive.
All right, that's all the questions I have. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Question or comments from other council members? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve, sir.
I'll second.
And that would be recommendation A and B.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you for bringing these to us. We definitely appreciate any tools that we can bring to keep the public safer.
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of the police department and myself, we really appreciate your guys' support. Thank you.
All right, moving on to eight, I mean nine, amendment to professional services agreement with RMC Water Environmental for Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements, presented by Mandee, senior engineer. Hello?
Mr. Mayor and the council members, good evening. Tonight, I will be making a recommendation on to add the new secondary clarifier design to the existing contract that has been wired back in November 2016. So, with that, I'm going to start with a little bit of background of the wastewater facility. Our wastewater facility treats the wastewater from our community, all of the community. It was constructed in the '70s, and then it was expanded back in 2005, the big expansion. Currently, it has the permitted capacity of 10 and a half million gallons per day to treat and discharge safely to the river or to the ponds. The current average flow to the facility is 65 million gallons per day. And to put the perspective, the things in perspective, total average solids loading, the solids coming to the plant is approximately 11,000 pounds per day. This is the aerial picture of the facility. And the facility is constructed of several process units, and each process unit's do its own job, and today's talk is primarily on this portion, the secondary clarifiers. And I'm going to go over the function of the primary, the secondary clarifiers. So, back in November 2016, the council awarded the professional services agreement for the design to RMC Water and Environment to design the recommended projects from the Priority One and Priority Two projects. The Priority One and Priority Two projects are the projects that were approved through the rate study in 2016. And back in 2016, the recommendation was to construct the improvements in two phases. And those two phases are, they were here. And the council approved Phase One, to moving forward with Phase One, and while the staff was still working on Phase Two, the pre-design, and some alternative analysis, and some other evaluations. So, between November and January, we have received additional information about the alternative analysis, the evaluation about the secondary clarifiers have been completed. And with that, based on that information, our design engineer and the city staff is recommending adding the design of the secondary clarifier project to Phase One, moving from Phase Two to Phase One. So, this was in Phase Two, so now it is being recommended as adding into Phase Two. So, this is the potential location of, not potential, the actual location where the new secondary clarifier will be located. So, just a brief summary of the function of the secondary clarifier. The function of the secondary clarifiers is to separate the solids from the treated wastewater, or treated water, I would say. And typically, when they design it, they, each clarifier need a specific area to handle or to remove the solids from the water for a given amount of flow. And for the solids, difficult to settle. There are different types of solids at the different wastewater facilities. Our facility is experiencing the solids, the sludge, that is difficult to settle. So, then, that will lead us to leave us two options. Number one is to provide an additional area to settle, number two, to evaluate the solids for potential process changes. That can add additional capacity into the secondary process. And within the last couple of months, we have, the staff was working with RMC and other industry experts to make any process changes, and based on those evaluations, the staff is recommending adding additional area to handle the solid separation. So, typically, this is the side picture, typical picture of the secondary clarifier. Water enters at the bottom, then goes all around, the solid settle at the bottom, that gets removed at the bottom, and then the water flows through this trough, and then goes to the additional treatment. So, in general, this is what it does. The water comes, the solid settle at the bottom, that we remove from the bottom, and then this water from the top is a clear water and goes to additional treatment. At our plant, it goes to disinfection through chlorine gas. So, the existing, we have three existing clarifiers, and all of three clarifiers need to remain in service all the times, and we do not have any needed redundancy to take any of the clarifiers down for repairs. If anything happens to any of the clarifiers, then we, there is a big potential for us to, for permit violations, and then that comes with the fines from the state. So, what the new secondary clarifier will do, it will provide additional redundancy for us to do the needed repairs on the existing clarifiers that need repair very quickly. And it will also provide additional operations flexibility to meet the permit compliance objectives. Sometimes, the facility faces unexpected loadings from the community, then the wastewater, the treatment gets disturbed. This will provide additional redundancy to handle those variations in the loading. And the design and construction within, in Phase One, will also provide cost-effective means to save money, because it is going to be a one project, and all the team is working on it, and there will be one contractor. So, mobilization, demobilization costs for, as a separate project, will be eliminated. So, with that, I recommend to authorize the city managers to execute amendment number one to the existing professional services agreement in the amount of $293,410 to prepare the design documents for a new secondary clarifier, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city. Any questions, please?
Any questions from council? Seeing none, you know what, he's talking to students, just for your sake, do you know what he's actually talking about?
You don't want to know.
Yeah, it's that smelly thing that's down south of town that takes all the stuff that runs downhill into the pipes, and when you flush your toilets, the garbage disposals, or anything like that, and trying to make sure that, you know, we follow the law that the state has put out in environmental things, and so, anymore?
And just through the mayor, you know, especially to the students that are here, if you ever have an opportunity to set up a, like a site visit?
Tours?
A tour of a facility, that I highly recommend going to our wastewater treatment facility right here in town and seeing what it takes to operate, just the, kind of the backside of city operations. It's an amazing facility, it's extremely clean, it's, I mean, it's run at the highest level, and I just recommend it to you guys, if you ever have that opportunity, as a class, as a group, whatever, if you have that interest, you have an interest in engineering, anything like that, it certainly would be a moment for you to take a look at what cities have to provide at different levels.
Absolutely. Another comment is water and wastewater, you know, that's environmental things that we need to deal with. There's a lot of science involved in that. You can put to use your interests of that kind of a thing, and they are very, very good-paying jobs. I'll tell you that right now, they're, you don't lose your job if you get into that field, you're definitely sometimes fought over by municipalities and cities and counties that have treatment plants of any kind, so it's a good, steady job. Okay, with that, yes? Okay, yeah, with that, I'm looking for a motion?
Through the mayor. I make a recommendation to authorize a manager to execute amendment number one and existing professional services, fair and designed documents, the new secondary clarifier.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm seeing, so unanimous, again, so we will move on. To presentation investment report, one of our most- To presentation investment report, one of our most, anyway, let's not, yeah, I was gonna say that, but.
Almost a comment there.
Yeah, no snoring involved here.
Very close.
No.
Let's hear for the wastewater guy. So.
Financial report is what's going on now, investments.
Members of the council, I'm bringing for you the quarterly investment report as of December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And for the benefit of the students, what we mean, what we mean when we start to talk about treasury is that the city has a big, has a savings account invested in bonds, mostly bonds and some other instruments. And the reason we do that is because about one-seventh of our income comes in in just February and May, when we're spending money, we're spending our eighty million dollar budget throughout the year. About twelve million of that comes in between February and May. And so we need to store that money, we need to keep that money in the same way that your household keeps a savings account. And this is how we, this is how we do it. So the second quarter portfolio, portfolio value that's from, going to be from October through December, had a market value of eighty-three point two million. Eighty-two point six of that were city-held bonds mostly, and about six hundred and seventy-one thousand were trustee-held districts, district bonds. About sixteen point one million net decrease from last quarter, and this is due mostly to the very busy activity of the levy improvements through the flood control agency. And so as we had taken on their treasury at the very beginning of their operations, we've been seeing a lot more fluctuation in the city's treasury and the pooled cash. The, the most, the largest transactions were a proposition fifty reimbursement for one point seven million, sales tax receipts for one point one seven million, salaries and benefits totaled about nine point eight million, which is a little bit larger than you might be accustomed to seeing, because we had a third payroll in the month of December. And the construction costs for the flood control agency, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency came to right around twelve million dollars. There were twenty-three investments that matured or sold in part or whole, and ten were purchased. The average yield of the investments sold were point eight-five percent. And the average yield of the investments purchased, the ten purchased, were about one point three-nine percent. This is a little pie chart of the composition of how the city holds these treasury funds. You can see a mix of, of cash and treasury bonds, agency bonds as well, which are, you may have heard or read in the newspaper about Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. They're, these are government bonds that are around the mortgage industry, and there are some corporate-held bonds similar to IBM, John Deere, Honda, Nissan, and so forth. And then you'll see LAIF up there, LAIF is the local agency investment fund, it's a big pooled savings account for local agencies like cities and special districts. And then you'll see some certificates of deposits and some municipal bonds as well. The agency bonds made up about twenty-four percent of the, of the city-held treasury, treasuries were, US Treasury bonds were eleven percent, Union State bonds made up six percent, and corporate bonds made up of seven, seventeen percent of the city-held composition, and that's about fifty-eight percent of the portfolio that are in bonds. Local Agency Investment Fund, that's the LAIF you see up on the screen, came to about twenty-eight percent, and cash and other cash-like investments were eight percent, certificates of deposits were six percent as well. So you can see the city holds more than a quarter of its, almost a little more than a third, actually, of its holdings in very liquid assets that can be cashed quite readily if the city has an operational need. So for the, again, for the benefit of the students, I do post this presentation on the city's website, if you need some slides or something to help you with your reporting in your class, just go to the finance department page, and you should see investment report link right there. Are there any questions from the council?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, that's, thank you for the report. Because that's just information only, just to keep us up on what's happening, so we don't have to take a vote on that. Okay, now, thank you very much, appreciate that. Before we move on to our business from the city council members and reports, I would like to say to the students that when you're done here, come up, get your papers signed by any one of us, or all of us, if you wish to stay that long. And we do have a City of, Yuba City PIN that we can give you also, as evidence to your teacher that you did attend the meeting, and you didn't snore through it, hopefully. Some of this stuff can be pretty dry, but it's very important that we deal with these business items for your protection and for your quality of life here in the community. So thank you very much for being here, but I will go now go to business from the city council, council member Buckland.
Thank you, Mayor. On the twentieth of January, I was able to attend the inauguration of our president, our current president, who's the fifty-eighth inauguration that has occurred in our country. That's a very small number, looking at going all the way back to George Washington, I'm not going to give you guys a big history lesson, but my purpose of going to the inauguration, and the students have also went from River Valley High School back there, was to witness the peaceful transition of power. And to do that without the narrative of media. When you watch it on television, you're hearing what the commentators want you to hear and not witness it in person. To witness it in person was an awesome experience. It was one that was filled with tradition, to watch the three branches of our government come together, and for that transition to occur regardless of position, it was amazing to build, to be there for that, at that, at that very moment. To watch peaceful demonstrations occur was something that we all take pride in as Americans. To watch riots occur was to my dismay. To watch the burning of vehicles, police having to throw tear gas, and other things as the destruction of property occurred, I can't say that I was proud at any time of those individuals, but although those, all those that I encountered along the way, with the exception of, of those that were being violent, were there to tell their story. And it was an awesome opportunity, even for those youth from River Valley High School. I tried to meet up with them, but they had a very, very busy schedule, and as you can imagine, getting around in Washington DC with all the different barricades that were in place could take as many hours just to move from one location to another. We also had a special meeting of our council that was public, and that had to do with the, the process of looking at our waste management contracts, and, and I'll leave it at that. But I will say that, and I'm not rubbing it in, there's, chief, there's a story to this. We look at Sunday, and we look at a, at a team. Okay, so it's the New England Patriots, and what they have accomplished as a group. To come from a behind, being looked at at halftime, people shutting them off, people not giving them an opportunity to leave, they left their television and they went and watched, I have no idea what, I think some of them were headed to counseling shortly after halftime. But to look at, at not giving someone an opportunity to come out, and in a second half, make amends and win a game. It wasn't Tom Brady, even though he's the very best quarterback to ever play in the NFL. Sorry.
Nobody wants to argue.
That's right. It, it was a team, it was a team effort, all the way from the coach, all the way down to the, the equipment manager of, of the New England Patriots. That's what led to the success of that team on Sunday. With all of that said, here's how I get to tie this back into government. We had our goal-setting workshop for the city of Yuba City. We have one of those teams. There are times when people count us out, there are times when it becomes difficult, there's times when we have, when we're stretched to make decisions. But in this goal-setting workshop that we had, our staff, our, our, all of the, the city manager, all of our department heads were there, the council was there, putting our heads together on how to be a game-winning team. And I think that we accomplished that at our goal-setting workshop. It was attended by one member of the public, and that's a disappointment to me. When we have these, yes, it's during the day, it's during the middle of the week, but that's when we can do it, because we were together for eight hours. We want public input, but we can't get that public input at those sessions if no one else shows up. So I encourage the, the public to continue to reach out to members of this council to build, to provide us with information of what they think would help provide better service to our community. Also attended the city awards dinner, I'm not going to go into a lot of that, but it was our five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty-year employees. It's amazing to see the longevity of employees that work for the city of Yuba City and to build, to come together and celebrate the accomplishments of each one of those. There were members like Ben, like Diana, all, all given awards. Terrell was given an award for the time that they've spent here at the city. It's a fantastic team that we have. Also attended the SECOG, or the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Government Relations Committee meeting yesterday. We talked about employee contracts and a couple of things, but one of the important things that, that came out was we're looking at the legislative calendar of the state of California, and there is an attempt, again, to fund transportation at a higher level, more money to, to come into the system, to build, to fix decaying roads, things like that. And it's, some of the, of what was presented a year ago in special session has been brought down in, in some of the dollar amounts, but I encourage the public to continue to follow what those assembly, what the Assembly and Senate bills are trying to achieve at funding levels to provide for communities for their, their transportation efforts. And then I've been reached out to by a number of individuals that live up on the north end of town, and unfortunately, we had a traffic fatality occur on a residential street, an area that typically gets very low traffic flow. But some of the traffic flow through there can be non-resident traffic flow, and some of that is, is just the design and, and what has occurred at Live Boulevard, this is up in the area of Maple, Maple Park, Ainsley, Lewis, all of that area, Miller, and, and how twenty years ago, the city looked at traffic flows and tried to mitigate some collisions that occurred. But as a result of that, the public is reaching out and wanting to know what can be done. And I'm always encouraged by what the police department and, and public works can do together, because traffic, there are three Es to traffic. And the first part is education. And as young drivers, I encourage you to continue to be educated in how to drive, and always perfect your skills and, and not risk life of another person or people inside your car. We have gone through a rash of, of local fatal crashes, not just in Yuba City, but over in Yuba County and, and everywhere else. Down, yeah, Highway ninety-nine, some, some horrific crashes, and some of this is, could be related to technology. There are laws in place that we're not supposed to be using our cellphones and, and everything else. But then the other part, one of the other Es is the enforcement aspect, and that's when the police department steps in and has to write tickets. They also do the education component. But then the last part is engineering. And one of the things that I would ask, and our council especially to look at and, and staff to look at, is a reevaluation of traffic flows in the area that I'm talking about, which is Ainsley, the Miller, Maple Park, or the Maple area, all of that area, maybe look at, at how our traffic flows are being pushed in today's design of the city, which has grown since, since those changes were made. We have one one-way street, and that's in that area. So I'm, I'm asking that, that we possibly look at this in the future and, and would bring that back, just as the requests of citizens have been coming forward. And that's all I have.
That's all? Okay.
That's it. But I'll leave my hat.
Okay, yeah, and I like that hat, by the way. I had a lot of people not like it, but I was still sticking to it. Council member Cardoza.
All right, I've had a pretty exciting couple of weeks, starting off, while John was at the inauguration, I got to step up and attend my first Center Animal Services Authority meeting, and while I was there as an alternate, the committee elected John as the new chairman for two thousand and seventeen.
Don't be missing or you get elected.
Yeah, sorry, John, I'm sorry. Also, I went to a regional housing authority meeting, nothing out of the ordinary, we approved some new, new service contracts for our housing, went to the new mayor's and council members' academy in Sacramento, was a two-day thing, learning how to be a better councilman and a future mayor, got to meet the councilmen and mayors from the whole state of California, from, you know, up north to down south, not just our general area, it was quite an experience, meeting new people and having a fun time. Attended AG plus rural small business workshop, that was pretty educational also, learning about agriculture, things that could happen, especially in our community. With, with the council, we had our priorities and goals meeting, as John said, we, Sean and I were, met with Congressman Garamendi, Garamendi, excuse me. He asked, he wanted to ask about us, a little bit about us, and then he gave us a little bit about what's going to be happening in the future with the city, county, and state. Attended a swearing-in at the PD for our brand-new dispatcher, Gammon Boys. It was a very nice ceremony by the chief, what, I met his mom and dad, they're both retired lieutenants from the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. And then day later, I went with the, our new, not our new, but our community services officers, and I helped install child car seats down at San Brennan. That was real fun, it's not just bolting them up, it's, I learned a lot that day, measuring this, that, and out of all the folks there, we ended up giving away about eight new seats. Other than that, everything else was wonderful, great day. And the day after that, I had the honor of doing a ride-along with our Yuba City Police Department, learning what a police officer does all day long. That was an exciting three days in a row there. Just last week, I had the honor of attending a neighborhood watch meeting with Pari, here on northeast side of town, learning there. Went to the artist reception and show at the theater gallery to benefit the Sutter Performance Association to renovate the Sutter Theater, and during the little thing there, we got a little bit, hopefully within the six to nine months, they're going to have their first show there. So it's looking, looking very good, it's been a long five years, they're planning on having their first show there very soon. And like I said, we attended the awards banquet, it was a great time, and it was great, I had the honor of passing out ten-year awards, and I had the honor of working side by side with all the employees there. So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much. And by the way, I heard you tried to get out and wanted to chase something, or when you're on the ride-along, you say, no, no, you stay, you stay out, anyway. Yeah, that, that would have been problematic.
Yeah, I learned, we don't chase people, we chase them down in cars.
Yeah. Council member Harris?
If you want to get in a real pursuit, just let me know. Yeah, very, very busy time, I have a lot of the same things, we went to the employee appreciation dinner up there at San Isidors. I tell you, for my first major event, or casual event with the city, I was very impressed, or we had a very good turnout, some celebrities there, Woody from Toy Story. We had a very good turnout, some celebrities there, Woody from Toy Story showed up, all kinds of things, it was quite nice. I appreciated that. I had the honor of presenting the fifteen-year awards, one of which was to Terrell right here. That was really pleasant, we had a good meal, a lot of good conversation and, and quite enjoyable. So, I hope we continue that into the future. I stopped by a senior commission meeting, introduced myself, met a few people. It was a good time to do that, get some FaceTime with some folks, answer some questions, and probably ask more than I answer, but it was, it was pretty good. The Rotary Crab Feed, a community event, a very major event. If anyone can ever attend it, I'd highly recommend that, very, very good cause and always a good time. As Councilman Cardoza said, we met with Congressman Garimendi along with the Vice Mayor of Live Oak, Alex, and I'm drawing a blank on his last name. Was very good conversation, very good-hearted, what? Tika.
Oh, that's right, it's Tika.
Alexander Tika. It was good, it was a good time, and we appreciated the outreach and the conversation. I already said, but the council goal-setting and team-building meeting, it was, it was very enjoyable. And I think we got to know each other quite a bit better. And just having some conversations, getting kind of creative on some things, learned a lot, and just made some good progress, I'm looking forward to the fruits of that effort. And in general, walking down Pluma Street, and I'm a member of the Moose Lodge, I have an opportunity, people come up to me and they, they like to chat about all things Yuba City. And that was kind of an interesting thing to be in that role and not talking about cop stuff. So, it was, it was a good time, and I really appreciate that and hope that continues as well. The SASSA or Sutter, Sutter Animal Services Authority meeting, we held right here. That was very informative, basically a beginning-of-the-year meeting, so some general information was passed on. And the, again, the new dispatcher swearing-in ceremony over at the Police Department, another employee with his family there was very enjoyable, and we are looking forward to working with him and being supportive of his new career. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Vice Mayor Dibball.
Several things, the Rotary Crab Feed was a wonderful, wonderful turnout. Anybody in the future, next year, or when it comes around, I highly recommend that you attend. It was a lot of fun, great food, crab and shrimp and all of that, but just lots of raffles, great dancing, and mingling with everyone. So, wonderful, wonderful turnout. Along with that, the Employees Appreciation Awards Night. I just want to say thank you to all of our city employees who do all of the work. They are the backbone to everything that happens in this community. All the services that you're provided on a daily, it, it's because of them. They are the backbone to make sure that all of that is taken care of, and you are provided with clean water, talk about a sewer system that works every time you flush that toilet. Everything, Police Department, our safety, our fire. It's because of all of those employees that are out there that do their day-to-day work. Very, very much appreciated. Goals and priorities, that was a full day, and the same as John Buckland had already indicated, that was a phenomenal turnout for all of us to be in the same room at every level to start setting some priorities and setting some goals, really getting to know each other and how we can work together and make the best for the community together as a team. And let's see, other meetings, had the LAFCO meeting, which is our local formation commission. We basically went over the bylaws and went ahead and updated those. So, it was a little bit on the long side of a meeting and very dry, but we did make it through and went ahead and looked at all of those bylaws. The Yuba Sutter Transit Meeting was our typical regular meeting with some of the programs. In addition to that, I just want to make a couple of announcements, since we do have students in here. One of them, actually, the, the Neighborhood Watch Program, I actually started that in the northeast side of Yuba City and ran into Councilmember Cardoza in the street one day, doing his, his ride-along and invited him to come over. So, thank you very much for participating in that. And hopefully, we'll get a great turnout for that Neighborhood Watch out in that area. Most of you might have seen this in your water bills. We are up and running our next Community Health Form, which will be held March first, so mark your calendars. Six o'clock in the evening at the Veterans Hall, which is just right here across the street. And it is going to be conversation on marijuana and drugs and the effects that it has on our youth, basically your brain function and what happens. This is for the entire community, parents, youth at all levels. And we will have a neurologist come in and actually talk. He will be the keynote speaker, along with our Police Department, our CHP as well, who will give statistics on what these drugs do to you and, and the level of production or non-production that happens with using particular drugs and what it hap, what happens when you get behind the wheel and so forth. So, we'll, this is going to be a very, very informative night. And these community health forms do take place on a quarterly basis on different issues that affect all of us at all levels in our community. So, please mark your calendars, it's going to be a really important night for this. The second is the Summer at City Hall program, since you all are here. The applications will be going out. Councilmember Buckland mentioned, you know, if, if you get to tour any of our facilities, part of this program is that you get to actually job shadow with our employees here. And you will go out to those facilities and you will see how the city functions and how you can participate and be engaged with the community and do more for the community, and how you can benefit from careers within the city and stay here for a higher education and so forth, and, and work here locally as well. So, open your calendars for that. That takes place actually in the summer for three weeks immediately after you get out of school. So, you run right into it, classroom is actually held here. And most of the time, it'll be a morning session where you're here getting some information, and your afternoon is actually spent out in the city. You also have a group project, you also have a mock city council meeting that you will actually be electing your own officers and actually hold a, a mock city council meeting on issues that you will participate in, you will choose, and do the whole research along with our employees here. So, it's, it's actually a very exciting program. You have students from last year that participated at River Valley High School as well as Yuba City High School. So, get connected with them, some of them are going to help recruit you to, into that program to get that experience, so. And it's going to be open for sophomores and juniors. Okay, I think with that, that's about it.
Very active group this last few weeks. And, and I do want to thank the staff for actually accelerating some of the activities, the workshop, you know, sooner this year. It does compact things a little bit and make a lot of extra time that we've, have to spend. But now it's over with and we can move on to the actual, you know, items that we really need to work on. The workshop, Goals and Priorities, was very good, as they said, I'll just bounce off of that. Development, the Redevelopment Oversight Board, when the governor decided to eliminate some wonderful programs that at least our community was doing it correct, our redevelopment, left us in many other communities hanging with a lot of repair to do with that system, and we had that. Yuba Sutter Transit, like Preet had said, Councilman Dibball. I'm just going to go quickly because I pretty much all covered. And then the special meeting on solid waste services and how we're going to approach selection of services, types of services, and the way we're going to select a new contract. We held that on the twenty-fourth of January. And then Valley Vision, which is a group for the region, Sacramento, goes to Placer County, Eldorado County, and it has, has to do with agricultural and rural issues is what they brought to our community. Congress Garimendi spoke there. I just gave a greeting that at first I didn't know I was supposed to, and they plugged me in and talked a little bit about our community. And a few others spoke at that about ag and rural issues in our community. Of course, I, I had the privilege of presenting the only thirty-year award for somebody that's been employed for thirty years, and it was a, was somebody in the Fire Department. And so, that was, that was actually very special to present that. Thirty years at one department, you know, that's, that's all awesome. Other than that, regards to the Patriots. Basically, it was the old guys, as they call them, against the young guys is what it really was. Getting out there and getting out and speed-stirring it and burning out and giving, then all of a sudden not having any more gas. And the old guys just kept plugging away and never giving up. That's one of the things we've learned as we age, is don't go out too fast and too hard because you burn out. So, and then, of course, leadership making a few mistakes. But I do want to say I did vote for the Patriots when I had so many that were not going that way. So, I'm gloating a little bit with a few of my friends. So, it's, and that's it for tonight, anything else from staff or anything? Okay, meeting adjourned.